Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Raymore City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, June the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Call the meeting to order and ask for the roll call, please.
Councilmember Abdelgawad?
Here.
Councilmember Barber?
Present.
Councilmember Berensen?
Present.
Councilmember Burke?
Present.
Councilmember Serko?
Present.
Councilmember Holman?
Present.
Councilmember Townsend?
Present.
Mayor Turnbull?
Present.
We have a quorum. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations or awards or personal appearances this evening, so I'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Feuerborn?
Thank your honor. I would ask Ms. Hill to make a staff report for the city clerk's office.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. The city clerk's office has received six applications for the sale of fireworks, all of which meet the requirements outlined in City Code Section 215, which governs the sale and discharge of fireworks. After inspection and approval by the Development Services Department and the fire marshal, each location will be issued their fireworks permit. The list of names and locations of each applicant has been included in your council packets. The sale of fireworks is permitted from ten a.m. to ten p.m. on June twenty-eighth through July fourth. The discharge of fireworks is permitted daily from ten a.m. to ten p.m. on July first through third and ten a.m. to midnight on July fourth. Any questions? I'm available.
Thank you. Mr. Holman?
Thank you, your honor. That's down a little bit, isn't it? Erica, it seemed like we ran about eight to eleven in the past. Does that sound right?
I believe there were five last year and six or seven the year before.
I remember last year in the pandemic, I think they ran out of fireworks. People didn't have anything else to do, so, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, Erica. Mr. Feuerborn?
Thank you, Ms. Hill. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report for Development Services.
Thank you, sir. I'll start this evening. Just a brief update on building activity. We had a very strong bid for new home permits being issued, but I do want to indicate that I do see a falling off of permits being issued probably for the next several months at least. You probably noticed in the report as well, we are down to two hundred and one lots available for permit issuance, and about forty-four percent of those are in Creekmore. We'll still see the scattered, you know, home permits in Creekmore, but really, without having more lots available, a lot of our subdivisions are being built out with only one or two scattered lots remaining. So, one of the things you'll see tonight's agenda, we have Oak Ridge Farms, so that'll add fifty-seven lots to that total, and they'll start building activity right away. But what I think it has led to, the next item to briefly go over is the upcoming review schedule. We have several new single-family subdivisions being proposed because I think the builders, the developers realize there just aren't many lots left in Raymore to build upon. So on tomorrow evening, at seven o'clock, the Planning Commission is going to consider the first of several subdivisions. Saddle Brook, which is the proposed expansion of the Brookside subdivision. Saddle Brook is located just on the north side of Hubock Hill Road to the east of Stonegate, and this is a single-family subdivision, one hundred and seventy-two lots. There'll be two different product styles and lot sizes proposed for that development, so the commission is going to consider amending the development standards for the property and, again, a new preliminary plat for the subdivision. The next evening, June sixteenth, we have a Good Neighbor meeting here in the council room at six-thirty. This will be for the proposed Sandora subdivision. This is a large subdivision. It's formerly known as the Estates of the Good Ranch. Bob Jackson was proposing that many, many years ago. Summit Custom Homes is looking at purchasing the property. They've submitted a request for a four-hundred-and-twenty-eight-lot, single-family development. In that proposed development, there would be three different price points, three different lot sizes, styles of homes that they would propose to come in with. Again, that property's currently zoned R1. They are looking to modify some of the development standards for that subdivision as well. One of the products they'll be proposing is what's currently being built in Eastbrook, the Clover and Hive, narrow lot, the two-car garage, single-family homes. That'll be on a portion of the property, so we'll be having a Good Neighbor meeting to present that to the neighbors down there on the sixteenth. Then on June twenty-third, another Good Neighbor meeting at six-thirty here in the council chambers. This will be for the Watermark, the proposed apartment community that would be located on the east side of Dean Avenue, just south of Office Max and Sam's Club. Watermark presented to the council at a work session recently. They would propose three hundred units, apartment units, on that property. It does require rezoning. It's currently zoned commercial, and they'll be, again, submitting their plans to the neighbors on the twenty-third. At the July sixth Planning Commission meeting, both that Sandora project and the Watermark project will be before the Planning Commission for a formal public hearing that evening. There are several other subdivisions that are currently in discussions with the city and will be announcing shortly for new development within the city as well. So a lot happening and trying to create new lots. It's going to take several months, obviously, for some of those lots to come forward, so hopefully we can regain the momentum that we've been having for single-family homes here towards the end of the year. That would conclude staff report at this time.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions, Jim? Jim, so what iteration of Saddle Brook will the Planning and Zoning Commission be considering tomorrow night?
This will be, this is entirely a single-family development. They have, what would I call this? The standard Brook-sized lots that you currently see in the Brookside subdivision on the north third of the development. When you get to the south two-thirds, they have a proposal for more villa homes, kind of like what you saw along Bristol, style homes along Bristol Drive when they built those. Those are smaller, little bit smaller lots because the footprints are a little bit smaller, two-car garages, et cetera. So that will be on the southern two-thirds, again, all single-family detached. The layout is really the same as what was initially proposed. Brook Park will go all the way through the subdivision with cul-de-sacs going back up towards the stream and the common area. That's on the west side of the development.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Hearing none? Mr. Feuerborn?
Thank you, Mr. Catterett. I would ask Mr. Murdock to make a report for emergency management.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everybody up here instead of down on the sides here, too. A couple of quick things that I wanted to give you an update on since we are kind of getting back ramped up in emergency management. One of the things is our CERT program, and as we've moved into the summer months, we are going to be able to finally get that restarted with the in-person meetings, getting more volunteers back out into different programs and events, and we're going to lead that off with the National CERT Conference, which is, lucky for us, is in Springfield, Missouri, coming up here in mid-July. And so a good contingent of our group is going to be able to get down there. It's actually a six-day event, but the majority of it is actually the fifteenth through the seventeenth of July, so we're going to be able to send. It looks like right now anywhere between ten to twelve people are willing to go down there for it, which is a really high turnout among all the groups in the Kansas City area, so I'm excited about that. And then we'll have our first true CERT in-person meeting here at the end of July. We tried for the end of May. There was an issue that came up, and so we had to postpone until then, but we are excited to get that going. The second thing that I wanted to update you on tonight is a new FEMA requirement. FEMA is going to be moving to a system called the National Qualification System. It's not a new system, I shouldn't say that, but in terms of what they're going to require of emergency management programs, it is going to be an additional requirement. Anybody who accepts emergency management performance grant funds, which we do here in Raymore, it pays for about half of the program, will have to conform to this new national qualification system. And essentially, there's three big things that are going to be kind of an added layer that we're going to need to do. We're going to have additional inventory and resource supply list that we have to be able to provide not only to the state but to FEMA so that it is easier, or in theory will be easier, to share from state to state, especially since we are so close to the state line. So that's one thing. The second thing that it's going to ask us to do is to increase the amount of training for EMPG-funded personnel. So in our case, that's just going to be me. That will be required to take anywhere between four to eight additional classes, so that's not a huge burden on anybody else. It'll be fine. I'm sure it'll be interesting. And so the third thing, though, and I've already told some in the management team, it will require any of our personnel who are listed within our local emergency operations plan who could serve within our EOC to most likely have to take a couple of additional courses as well. And so we are still getting the final details of that from our county representatives and the state, but I just wanted to make the council aware that there are some new requirements that are coming out to gain that additional funding. And with that, I wanted to be brief tonight, and if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Ryan, will there be any additional training requirements for elected officials?
There will be volunteer opportunities for training. It would not be a requirement, but you would have access to three new courses that people would be eligible for.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone?
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Feuerborn?
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Reminder to the council, I've been going over the calendar for June over and over and again because it's so unusual. Next Monday night, June twenty-first, you'll be meeting in a special meeting to conduct regular business, just like this evening. The following, or the next Tuesday night, June twenty-second, is the council tour of the projects Compass Health, Lofts, and Van Trust. We've secured, you probably saw the email from Mr. Grass, we've secured a coach bus for you all, and we'll be leaving here in the parking lot at five fifteen to make it over to Compass. And then the following week, on June twenty-eighth, we will have the special meeting to conduct Ward One open-seat interviews. Would inform the council, as our second item tonight, that tentatively last Thursday we began the budget run. That started in earnest today with meetings back-to-back-to-back for the entire day till about five o'clock this afternoon. So if everyone is looking dazed from a staff standpoint, that's what we're doing right now in preparation for the August, the mid-August council presentation of the budget. That concludes staff reports this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Feuerborn? We have no committee reports tonight. We have several items on our consent agenda tonight. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda in either all or part.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the consent agendas. Item A, City Council minutes for May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one. Item B, TB Hannah Playground Equipment Acceptance and Final Payment, excuse me. Item C, TB Hannah Sprayground Equipment Acceptance and Final Payment. Item D, Willow Wind Gravity Sewer Project Acceptance and Final Payment. And item E, two thousand and twenty, curb replacement project, acceptance and final payment.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items A through E. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Could I please have the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-four by title only?
The second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-four by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, vacating a portion of the utility easement located on Lot one ninety-six in Edgewater at Creekmore Sixth Plat, a subdivision in the city of Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-four, easement vacation thirteen zero seven, Granton Lane.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill three-six-two-four. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero. Thank you. Could I please have the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-three by title only?
The second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-three by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving the Oak Ridge Farms' final plat located in Section fifteen, Township forty-six North, Range thirty-two West, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-three, Oak Ridge Farms' final plat.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill three-six-two-three. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero. Thank you. Could I please have the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-two by title only?
The second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-two by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with TC Fuller Construction LLC for the Silver Lake Drainage Improvements Project, City Project Number twenty-one, three-seventy-seven, two-zero-one, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve Bill thirty-six two-two, award of contract Silver Lake Drainage Improvements.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-two. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero. Could I please have the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-five by title only?
The second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-five by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving an agreement with the Community Bank of Raymore to provide the city depository services for a three-year period.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
Move that we approve Bill thirty-six twenty-five, depository agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-five. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero. Now move on to new business. Could I please have the first reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-six by title only?
The first reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-six by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the zoning map from A Agricultural District to R1P Single Family Residential Plan District, a one hundred and forty-five-acre tract of land located west of Curzwell Road, north of Fifty-Eight Highway in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
This item requires a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report on this agenda item.
Thank you, sir. This request this evening was filed by Danny Carroll. It's requesting to reclassify the zoning of one hundred and forty-five acres of land he owns, rezoned from agricultural and R1 Single Family District to our R1P, which is our single-family planned district. This one hundred and forty-five acres is on the west side of Curzwell Road. It is east of both Cumberland Hills and the Heritage Hill subdivision, basically wraps around the Timber Creek Elementary School. The future land use plan map of our growth management plan does designate this property as appropriate for single-family, low-density residential development. This reclassification of zoning does require a public hearing, was advertised for this evening. I do need to enter to the record the notices that were sent to all the adjoining property owners, the notice of publication in the newspaper, our Unified Development Code, the applications submitted, our growth management plan, and the staff reports submitted to you this evening. The rezoning application did require a Good Neighbor meeting. We held back on April twenty-eighth, and we had, I believe, eight residents present at that meeting. Their questions and the response to those were included within the staff report. The staff report also identifies the proposal, the request for the R1P. When you request a planned district, typically it's to request modifications to our development standards such as lot size, lot width, setbacks, et cetera. When you make that request, you have to offset that request with the provision of amenities within the subdivision. So the request that they're looking to modify from the R1 would be to reduce lot size. The smallest lot would be seven thousand, seven hundred square foot. Setbacks front and rear would be twenty-five feet. Side setback would be seven and a half feet. The amenities that they're proposing for this subdivision, and this is beyond the parkland dedication, which I'll mention in a moment, but they will provide in their single-family homes, they'll have several different front elevations for the homes. They will be providing a swimming pool, a playground, and then there'll be open space along the street corridor. I do want to note with the rezoning request, we always submit those to the school district for their review. They have been aware of development potential on this property for many years and have acknowledged that and accounted for the growth of this subdivision within their plans in the school system. Planning Commission submitted proposed findings on the rezoning request, and they did at their May eighteenth meeting vote nine-zero to accept those findings and forward this request for rezoning to the city council with their recommendation of approval. I did include the excerpt from the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, and Mr. Mark Cook is here this evening representing the applicant and the developer for this subdivision. That would conclude staff report.
Thank you. Any questions, staff? Yes, Mr. Feuerborn?
Jim, you were going to speak to the parkland dedication.
I apologize. I did mention that. Thank you, sir. It really is more appropriate at the preliminary plat stage, so I will mention that, which is the next application for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Holman?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Catterett. Very thorough report, as usual. Thank you for the explanation of the planned district. We've heard planned unit development, and in recent years, we haven't heard planned district since, gosh, it probably dates back to oh-seven, oh-eight or earlier, prior to the housing downturn, if you will. We used to get, I remember, prior to that, we used to get comments occasionally, in fact, almost all the time from South Metro, and the shortchanging or shortage of the side yard setback is probably one where I would think the fire department, if they were going to have comments, would weigh in. Did they, do they provide comments to planning and zoning anymore or to the community development department, and they have anything to say about this one?
They absolutely are given the, all the applications, rezoning and the preliminary plats. They do provide comments back. They do provide their review. With the seven and a half-foot setback, that gets fifteen-foot separation, which is more than adequate for the fire district, so they had no comments for me to share with the council on this application.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any questions, staff? Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Does the applicant wish to address the council at this time? Okay. There's no further questions. The public hearing is open at this time, but would entertain someone from the public that wish to address the council at this time. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing at this time, and I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-six, the prairie at Carroll Farms rezoning.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill thirty-six twenty-six. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All of those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero. Could I please have the reading of Resolution twenty-one fourteen by title only?
The reading of Resolution twenty-one fourteen by title only. An ordinance, or a resolution of the Raymore City Council approving the prairie at Carroll Farms' preliminary plat.
Thank you. This item also requires a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this time, and ask for a staff report.
Thanks, sir. Again, I will ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report for this agenda item.
Thank you, sir. Coincident with the rezoning that you just approved on first reading, the applicant did submit a preliminary plat for a proposed subdivision that they're calling the prairie at Carroll Farms. This would be for the entire one hundred and forty-five acres. This preliminary plat consists of three hundred and twelve single-family lots, and then there's eight common area tracts within the proposed subdivision. And a preliminary plat requires public hearing. That was advertised for this evening. I do need to enter to the record, again, the notices that were sent to the adjoining property owners, notice of publication in the newspaper, the Unified Development Code, the application that was submitted, the growth management plan, and the staff report submitted to you this evening. Again, the Good Neighbor meeting that was held on April twenty-eighth did cover both the rezoning and the preliminary plat, and we repeated the questions and responses that were given at that meeting. Our engineering division did review this preliminary plat. The traffic study and stormwater study for the proposed plans and specifications do comply with all of our standards for this city, so they do recommend approval of the preliminary plat. Mentioned the rezoning, but the, it's really more applicable to the preliminary plat. At April twenty-seventh, the Raymore Parks Recreation Board did meet to consider and provide a recommendation to both the Planning Commission and the city council on the parkland dedication requirement. By five-zero vote, they do recommend approval of the proposed parkland dedication, which is a tract that's in the northeast quarter of the development. There's an existing pond there on this particular property. It's eleven point five-six acres. As part of the dedication process, the developer will be filling that in as a, it's a farm pond, not under any regulatory guidance at this time, so they will be filling that in, compacting it, et cetera, so it can be utilized as a future park site. The details of how that is done and when that is done are outlined in the memorandum of understanding, but there's also a fee in lieu component because the eleven and a half acres doesn't meet the entire parkland dedication requirement. So the fee in lieu, which amounts to about a little over forty-nine thousand dollars, would be paid at the time the final plats are submitted. So previously, it was always when a building permit was issued. Now, the code requirement is the parkland gets dedicated upfront with the first plat, and the fee in lieu gets paid as the plats are submitted. As far as acceptance of that parkland, the MOU outlines that the, it may not occur with the first plat because what we want to have is that land to be settled and usable by the time the park department wants to utilize that property. So the MOU fully covers the standards for which that land will be and when it is dedicated to the city. A couple of other comments on the preliminary plat. Of course, the Curzwell Road is slated for some improvements as part of the general obligation bond. This development will have some impact on Curzwell Road, and again, the MOU covers the turn lane requirements that will be made for left- and right-hand turns into the subdivision. Many of you are probably familiar that there is a bus access that crosses through this property to get to the back of Timber Creek Elementary School. The first phase of this development will include the roadway Carroll Farms Parkway. It'll actually, will go all the way up to the east side of the school property, so when that road is accepted by the city, that could then turn into the bus access for the school site, and that gravel road that crosses through the field would be eliminated. Sierra Drive will provide the vehicular and pedestrian connections east-west to the Cumberland Hills subdivision, and that would be in a future phase, won't be in the first phase, but it would also provide direct connection to the proposed park that would be built. There's actually going to be a tract with a trail segment for anybody walking down Sierra or from this subdivision to be able to get directly to the park, so they don't have to go out onto Curzwell to get to the park. Again, I mentioned the amenities under the planned district. The MOU specifically identifies when those amenities have to be constructed, so if they are promising it upfront, anybody that would be purchasing lots in the development will know exactly when it has to be constructed, and it's triggered by the phasing of the subdivision itself. The Planning Commission, again, submitted proposed findings on this preliminary plat. Was that their May eighteenth meeting that they did vote nine-zero to accept those findings and forward this preliminary plat application to the city council with recommendation of approval. There were three conditions placed upon that recommendation, and based upon that, what staff would request after closure of the public hearing is to actually continue this request until request until your June 21 meeting. We have to have the zoning approved in order for this plat to be valid. If zoning wasn't approved at second reading, then this preliminary plat does not meet the current requirements. So, I would request that, that's really the condition number one, request that action this evening after the public hearing. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions of Mr. Fear-
Mr. Catterett.
Jim, so I guess I was dozing at the time, but there's not going to be a bus access to that, that road that abuts the Timber Creek properties that runs north-south?
There will be.
There will be a bus access.
That is going to be the new bus access roadway rather than cutting through the field the way it currently does.
Right, right. Okay.
Yes. So, the school district is aware of that. Again, they have seen this preliminary plat and were aware of the change that would happen to the bus access.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Berensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I heard you right, too, Jim. The, the use of that road, once it's open, is usable all the way going to the west. It won't stop at the school. It'll be through traffic going all the way past the school into that subdivision that exists?
That's correct. At a future phase, so with the first phase, the roadway will come off of Curzwell and go to at least with that, to at least the school property, the northern end of the school property. With the, with the stream there, it won't cross that stream until a future phase where it would connect to Sierra and then over to Cumberland Hills.
Okay. But once it's done, it will connect all the way through?
Yes, it will.
All right. Thank you for clarification.
Through the school properties?
Not-
Not through the school properties. It's going to be connected to Cumberland, correct?
That's correct. Through Sierra Drive.
Sierra Drive, right.
Dead ends right there.
That's the road that cuts through.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? You're going to ask the applicant? Anyone step forward? No? Okay. And it is a public hearing. It's open at this time. I would entertain anyone from the public that would like to come and address the council on this subject. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. I see no one coming forward, so I will close the public hearing at this time, and I'd entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 21-14.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
And I believe on this one, we need to have a continuance?
Yes, sir. Till the June 21 meeting.
Okay. So, I would move that we continue Resolution 2114, the Prairie, Prairie at Carroll Farms preliminary plat until the June 21 city council meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded to continue the approval of Resolution or consideration of Resolution 21-14 to the June 21 meeting. I think I got that right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Could I please have Resolution 2115 read by title only?
The reading of Resolution 2115 by title only. A resolution in support of the application to the Missouri Housing Development Commission for financing the Grant Park Villas in Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report on this item.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Beckler, who's representing Zimmerman Properties, the proposing to develop a 48-unit affordable senior housing development at the southeast corner of Adams Street and Grant Drive. Developer is proposing to use the low income housing tax credit program, which does require approval from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Grant Park Villas, it's a proposed two-story apartment building. It consists of one and two-bedroom units. Adilities in the development would include community rooms on each level, fitness center, picnic areas, computer center, library, courtyard areas, as well as elevator for the building. At least one tenant in each unit must be at least 55 years of age. This is an age-restricted development. Mr. Becker was at your work session on June 7th and did discuss this proposed project with you. As part of that application, he intends to submit to MHDC local support for the developments and important criteria in gaining approval of the application by the commission, and Resolution 2115 would indicate city council support for the application. This is the third year in which he has come before the council. The previous two years, the resolutions were, were approved by the council, but MHDC did not fund the project. They are the owners of the property and are attempting again this year with that application. Mr. Beckler is in the audience if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Catterett or Mr. Beckler? If not, must've got worked out at the work session, so I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve Resolution 2115, supportive application to MHDC for Grant Park Villas.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution 21-15. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Motion carries six yes, one no. Now move on to, could I please have the first-
Mayor? Yes.
If you're so inclined, I, when someone typically votes in dissent, I'm interested in hearing their reasons why, if she's so inclined.
Mr. Belgoine? You care to?
I'd be happy to share later.
Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3628 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3628 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Westland Construction, Inc., for the Johnston Drive Sanitary Sewer Project, city project number 2137201, in the amount of $298,250, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a staff report on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last October, operations and maintenance staff, or last August, I'm sorry, operations and maintenance staff responded to a sewer backup at 1007 Johnston Drive. Typically, we, once the line is cleared and flowing, we will then televise it to see what, what issues there are. We found a considerable amount of debris and what appears to be typically backfill from the pipe, which indicates to us there's some joint separations and some other things. Also, a lot of sags in the line where the line has settled over time and is not, not flowing. So, our recommendation was to replace approximately 1,200 feet of sewer between Johnston Court and Silver Lake Drive. We did, we do recommend award of this contract to Westland Construction.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3628, award of contract, Johnston Drive sanitary sewer replacement.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3628. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Thank you. Now move on. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3627 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3627 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 capital budget to provide funding for the Johnston Drive sanitary sewer repairs.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Yes, sir. This is a tandem item to the one you've just motioned on, so I would ask Mr. Crass to make a report.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What we are requ-, this was, this previous project is currently an unfunded project. It was not included in the fiscal year 2021 capital budget. We are requesting an amendment to fund the project.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Crass? Or Mr. Fearborn? Since it's his budget. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3627, budget amendment, Johnston Drive sanitary sewer replacement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3627. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3629 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3629 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling Construction, Inc., for the 2021 Sidewalk Gap Project, city project number 21381201, in the amount of $183,453.90, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a staff report on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The fiscal year 2021 capital budget included a number of sidewalk improvements to complete our sidewalk network. This project will provide sidewalk along Johnston Drive, Fox Ridge Drive, Prairie Lane and Adams Street. We do recommend award of the contract to Terry Snelling Construction.
I would dump tail off of Mr. Crass's report to indicate to the council that this sidewalk gap program is the CIP sidewalk gap program, not to be confused with the one that you will be seeing from Mr. Catterett in September.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of staff? There's nothing further. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve Bill 3629, award of contract, 2021 sidewalk gap program.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3629. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3630 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3630 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with key equipment and supply for the purchase of a Vector sewer jetter.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Your Honor. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a staff report on this particular purchase and agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are requesting approval of a contract to purchase a new jetter Vector for the Operations and Maintenance Department. The current vehicle is approaching the end of its life cycle, and we are having significant repair bills with the hydraulic pump system on there. The new vehicle has a number of enhancements that will increase the service life of the, of the project, probably the biggest thing, and also what we consider as more of a safety issue is if you're familiar with a power takeoff, the current vehicle is, is equipped with a power takeoff. That's a mechanism by which you engage a transmission to run the pumps and idle, idle the engine up. It's very loud for the operators. This uses a much more efficient hydraulic pump that which will increase the service life and make it a little bit better for my folks that are operating it. We do recommend award of the contract with key equipment company.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Mr. Holman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Crass, this one's just killing me. Do you get to go home at night and say, hey, I bought a 21, 2021 Vector 2100I sewer jetter? Because that just really sounds cool. It sounds like you're buying the newest Lamborghini.
We've actually been calling it the Velocivectors.
The Velocivectors. Mr. Berensen?
As a six-year Kenworth salesman in the past, I see the price on this, and I can't help but wonder how great the commission would have been on something like that. So, just a side note, I am glad that they're going with a Kenworth truck and look forward to seeing that, not smelling it, but seeing it in action. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? There's nothing further. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Yes, it is entertaining, sir. I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3630, award of contract to 2021 Vector 2000I sewer jetter.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I cannot help but second this, sir.
Motion has been ma-, thank you, sir. There's, motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3630. Any further discussion? Please say no. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Thank you.
Tom Circo says we can park it at his house, sir.
Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3632 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3632 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the FY 2021 budget to update the schedule of fees for residential trash service.
Thank you, sir. Staff report?
I would ask Mr. Eke to make a staff report on this agenda item, sir.
Thank you, sir. This item follows the city coun-, the council's work session discussion from last week. As part of the contract for trash recycling and yard waste collection, Constable Sanitation is requesting an adjustment in the fee for trash service. The increase follows the Consumer Price Index for garbage and trash hauling and is equal to 60 cents a month just for the trash service. The fee for recycling, yard waste, and bulky item, monthly bulky item pickup will not change. George Constable and Shannon Edgeman with Constable Sanitation are here this evening if you have any questions for any of us.
Thank you, Mr. Eke. Any questions of Mr. Eke? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, sir. As I was reviewing this and thinking of the work session last week and our previous contract, we had a similar CPI adjustment even with that service, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, just want to make that point.
In order to have a black and white method to do this that everybody can agree on, this particular method mathematically is written into the contract.
Correct. And the point I was making is the service today is by far better than the service we had before, and that one had a CPI adjustment as well. So, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make note that Constable Sanitation is here tonight, both Shannon and George, and, and we have a very good relationship with them, and the people of Raymore love the service. I'm not sure why, they're the next to the last on the agenda tonight. I made them sit through our whole meeting, but don't let that be a reflection of what the city thinks of Constable Sanitation. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Hearing none. I do entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the first reading of, first reading of Bill 3632, budget amendment, schedule of fees, trash, recycling, and yard waste.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3632. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, 7-0. Now move on to the last item under new business. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3633 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3633 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Bliss Associates LLC to provide valuation and appraisal services on public works projects funded through the general obligation bonds approved by voters in fiscal year 2020.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask Mr. Zer to make a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mayor, members of the council. I'm happy to present this evening the proposal for Bliss Associates to provide valuation and appraisal services for the city on a project basis. This would be related to the recent 2020 general obligation bond infrastructure and transportation improvements. It will allow us to be able to receive information and reports regarding the costs and appraised to receive information and reports regarding the costs and appraised valuations for between 44 and 50 different properties, all that will be required for easement and right-of-way acquisition. Mr. Robin Marks, principal with Bliss and Associates, is here in the crowd this evening. Happy to answer any additional questions you might have regarding either.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Zer or Mr. Bliss? Is that the name you said?
Sorry, Mr. Marks.
Marks.
Okay, thank you.
If there's nothing, then I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 36-33, acceptance of Bliss Associates' proposal for appraisal services.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 36-33. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, seven-zero. That concludes our official business this evening. We'll now move on to public comments. Entertain anyone that'd like to address the council at this time. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comments and move on to mayor-council communications. I'll start at my far right. Mr. Berenson, why don't you start off this evening, sir?
Thank you, sir. Somehow I knew you were going to do that, and I don't really have anything tonight, so I'll let my colleague to the left start it off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mrs. Belgoine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just short and sweet from me tonight. It's exciting to hear about all the new subdivisions that are being proposed and that we're taking a look at, really expanding the number of lots we have available. That's something we've been hoping would be coming for a little while, and so it's great to see that happening. And then secondly, I spent my day today out on Creek Morris Golf Course at the Compass Health Chip and for Charity Golf Tournament, volunteering. I'm not a golfer, but it's great to have Compass Health in the community and acting as part of the community, and I'm really looking forward to that tour next week. And I know they are too, looking forward to having us there. So, thank you.
Mr. Holman?
Thanks, sir. Two items. One, today's Flag Day. It's been around a long time. It's probably the least remembered of all the national observances. It was actually signed by President Woodrow Wilson in 1916, about, slightly about a year before US Center World War I. Just kind of something to remind us as times are turbulent and things are going on overseas. The other thing I had was just, I did a real bit of rough math. It took me back, Mr. Ketterett's report took me back to the days of the early 2000s when we saw this kind of interest in building activity in Raymore. We know that historically, we've known that the strong interest in Raymore and our growth is driven by three factors: strong public safety performance, our school district, and back in those days in particular, it was access to a variety of styles of different price levels of housing, and we're starting to see the pendulum come back to that. So, just between the proposed subdivisions at Saddle Brook, Sendara, Sendera, I'm pronouncing that correctly, and the Prairie at Prairie Carroll Farms, you're talking about 1,000, roughly 1,000 new single-family homes. That's just one form of housing that we're seeing here in town. But that alone, now, that's going to take a number of years approvals in the building and buying, but that alone would represent about a 15% to 20% increase just in our family homes here in town, once complete. Just those three, as Mr. Ketterett said, we have interest in other ones as well. That does not include our multifamily or our rental property that is either in the process of being built, constructed as we speak, or being proposed for the future. So if there was any doubt about the future growth of our city, this is pretty much solid concrete proof that it is going to stay where it's at or it's going to continue northward as it has for a number of years. This is a popular destination for people. We have a good city. We have an exceptional staff, and people like living here, and this is just more growing proof. Just, I think, Mr. Ketterett would agree, the market forces have come back together at the right time, and we're starting to see developer interest come back into the community, even with detriment that they're seeing with the prices of building materials and available land, that kind of thing. So, great news all around, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree with what Councilman Holman had to say. I like seeing P&amp;Z busy, and it looks like they're busy and their agenda is full. It's not just one thing. So, when that's happening, things are going on. So, as our funnel is getting depleted, it's getting filled back up. Perfect time for that. I wanted to make a note, I know it's parks and recs, but we had the final payment for the TB Hannah Splash Park, and I noticed last week, there was, it was a day it was down. I don't know if it was a planned maintenance or unplanned maintenance, but oh my goodness, our people are used to that splash park now. I just saw social media was blowing up, you know, when's it going to come back on? When's it going to come back on? So, I think it's back on. I think they got it going, and noticed the parking lot was full again. But what a spot in Raymore right now. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have to echo Mr. Barber. I also have noticed an uptick as I go to services on Sunday, and I purposely drive that area throughout the week when I have some free time, just to drive by and see the activity, and it's nonstop activity over there. I forget the hours of that, but I would assume that as the last trickle of water drops off of that, it's still being used, so that's an excellent amenity on the community. And also, to Mr. Holman's point, I also was doing some research on the growth in our community between single-family and multifamily, and stumbled upon some statistics that Mark has out there on building permits. And it was interesting to see the growth trajectory and the growth trends between our two communities here, Belton and Raymore, and Cass County, from all the way back to the 80s. And you can see the trends and how it shifted from, I believe in the late 90s, you know, where the house, single-family permits shifted from the Belton side to the Raymore side, and the numbers started to increase steadily. And similarly, you know, kind of on the flip side of that, you know, the multifamily units kind of ticked up on the Belton side, and we had nothing for several years until the most recent ones that went in last year and a few years before that, I believe, were the major ones with Eva Glenn. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you have those specific numbers. Well, just interesting to see that, and then when you kind of expand that, you know, view outward, you look, you know, the Kansas City metro area and other communities that we sometimes, not sometimes, that we compare ourselves to, to kind of evaluate where we stand, and you see a similar trend when it comes to a shift from, you know, the single-family to multifamily units just because of how the market is trending and the desires of the consumer and the economic abilities of everyone. It's just interesting to see how the communities respond to the market, you know, demands, and we are no different in that capacity, and how we are having to make adjustments that set and prepare our community to be successful in the out-years, as I call them. And I appreciate staff's ability in working with developers, investors, and all those who come to our community seeking ways to be a part of it, and we find a way to do it within our code and our charter to make them successful and to make our residents have somewhere to call home. So, again, thank you to staff and all those who have a good, a great hand in doing that, and the council as well. This council and past who have set the stage for the things that we're doing today, and the things that we do that sets the stage for the next crew of council members to be successful as well. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Serko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I concur with all my colleagues up here, so don't want to go through all that. So, yeah, that's great. I would like to say, to Mr. Constable, I heard you had a little setback when it came to the yard waste on Tuesdays over behind. You had to get a truck and a trailer out, or they did, to pick it up. So, I mean, you're right on spot with that. I hope that's been resolved for you at a very inexpensive rate, I hope. But you did a great job, made one call to see what was going on. Very easy to get back a call back, let us know what's happening, and you guys are out the next day, you're getting it all picked up. But anyway, I hope that worked out for you. But you're good. You deserve the CPI. You deserve what you're getting. You guys are phenomenal. And I keep on talking to people and talking to people, and I really don't really see much of anything going on my ward too, or people I talk to around. They just love your trash service. So, kudos to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Serko. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank the city staff. On behalf of the Silver Lake residents, we've got several times that we've had people kayaking in the streets and, you know, over the last few years, and some of these sewers have been giving us trouble for, well, as long as I can remember, 2015 and earlier. But it's, to point out, the sewer system there was not put in by the city, because I've seen the sewer that was in my front yard when we had issues, and it was a clay pipe where another pipe had been scored, and they knocked out a hole in it and put the pipe in with nothing covering the holes, and it just backfilled under my neighbor's driveway for years. But, so the city doesn't always, isn't always able to find the plans for when these sewers were built such a long time ago before they were incorporated in the city. So, we really do appreciate the amount of work sometimes it's taken to keep our infrastructure up in Silver Lake. Also, on, oh, Silver Top, Silver, I can't remember which street it is, one of the ones with silver that we approved the project tonight, and water continuously goes down the street. And so, they're going to put in, we've approved that second reading on that. There's a spot like that in, near where I grew up, on a big hill, and it used to be the only way out of my entire development was up that hill where water would constantly come out and put a sheet of ice on the street. And I drove by it the other day, and I said, hey, it's still, still, that, it's still going. It's going to go forever. So, this is really a good thing to do, because it will go forever. And now, we're doing something to keep it from deteriorating our streets and curbs. Appreciate it. And also, thank you to all the people working outside.
Thank you, sir. I really don't have anything to add to what my colleagues have said up here tonight, so I'll close comments at section now, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we adjourn from the regular City Council session for June the 14th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second the motion, sir.
Thank you, sir. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn from the Monday, June 14th council meeting. All those in favor?